You ready? Okay. I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So standing up, one of my shoes came off. And I thought, God, I gotta deal with stand tonight.
Mark, you have lost a lot of weight.
A little bit, yeah.
You've lost weight here.
I lost weight in my feet.
You do.
Yeah, I did, yeah. My shoes fit better, everything fits better. Crazy. But boy, do I miss pizza. Uh, roll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Ermally.
Here.
Beanie.
Beanie did call today, and I did send a note to, I think Clerk and you, Keith, that, or last night, that he was not gonna be here, so he needed to miss.
Mynell.
Here.
Zhang.
Here.
White.
Here.
Zagami.
Here.
Okay. Under public comments, I do have one public comment here, and is there anything online?
Nothing online.
Okay. All righty. So, um, let's see, under public comments, we've got one here from Jim Penasol. Is this where you wanna?
I'll wait for the agenda item to come up.
Oh, okay, oh. Um, just should've read it.
Over seven hundred and twelve on there.
I see it. All right, thank you, Jim. Anybody else in the audience that wants to, uh, talk under public comments? Anybody on social media? Anybody for a public comment? Third time anybody for a public comment, hearing none? Let's move on to number four, public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing on the fiscal 2022 budget for the Village of Weston.
Thank you. Good night, screen, Michael.
You can.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a presentation for our 2022 budget. As a reminder, in the beginning, this budget is to be adopted tonight. What I'm presenting can change. So if there is something that we don't like or change, it's, uh, a budget that is gonna be adopted by the end of the night, but not as right now. So, um, the first screen that you're, that outlined for tonight is public hearing notice. Then we're gonna talk about the general fund and then all other funds. Introduction, our budget process usually starts in August or September. Excel spreadsheets are shared with department heads, and then they work with staff to provide estimates for the current year, budgets for next year, and future plans. Finance staff prepares the wages and benefits for all areas. All information is combined and presented to the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Village Board. Next, this is a picture of what was prepared and noticed in the paper. It presents the revenues with an estimate of eight million, one eight, seven, two forty-one, which is a 2.99% increase, and then the expenditures at the same dollar amount at eight million, one eight, seven, two forty-one. And below, you'll see where it talks about the total expenditures, then the levy. So the total tid in, which includes the increment, is eight million, eight twenty-four, three ninety-three. Of that eight million dollars, five point one goes to operations, 1.4 to debt service, and 133,000 goes to other funds, which includes the CIP and the Aquatic Center. Below, you'll see the tid in, tid out values. Total assessed values for the village is one million, one six, one billion, 169 million, eighty-two. And then comes down to the assessed tax rate. The total tax rate that the taxpayers are gonna see on their tax bill is seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Down below, you'll see the all other funds. So when you're looking and talking about the village as a whole, the total expenditures for the village as a whole are thirty-three million, 723,007,14. Uh, this is a nice graph of our tax rate, shows that, um, the proposed rate of seven dollars and fifty-four cents is a twenty-nine cent increase from last year. This graph shows the combined rate, so includes the school district, the tech college, and the county, um, for a total net rate of twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents. This rate is the net, so it's reduced by an estimated dollar fifty-two of our school tax credit. Um, this amount is estimated, we will not know the final amount till the end of the week.
Have you heard anything on the lottery credit?
No, that's, everything comes out, I think if they said the nineteenth, so that'd be Friday.
I just happen to think about that way.
Yeah.
Lottery credit.
So we can't tell people what their tax bill's gonna be yet, we gotta wait for a bit. But, um, right now, it's, we got a preliminary rate of twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents, which is a fifty-seven cent increase over last year, or 2.4%. Next. Uh, this shows a summary very similar to our public hearing notice, where, um, the change from the twenty-one budget to the twenty-two budget is 237 dollars, 237,705. Okay. This summarizes the expenditure changes, so we went by department, and the amended budget versus the 2022, and it shows the amount change for each department. And down below, it gives the significant changes of why it did change, with along with our assumptions. Um, here's a graph showing the expenditures by department. Um, fifty percent goes to public safety, fifteen percent general government, public works are at twenty-six percent, and then the rest is with culture and rec, community development, and all other. The revenues, total revenue increases 237,000. The majority of that comes from our property taxes at 204,497. Of our total budget, sixty-three percent comes from taxes. The next highest is intergovernmental revenues at twenty-two percent. Those are the... Okay, and then that's it.
Then I'll just give a quick overview of the all other funds. So we have eighteen other funds in addition to the general fund. The categories are debt service, the special revenue funds, the capital project funds, and the utility funds. So the debt service fund for the 2022 budget looks very similar to the twenty-one budget, not a ton of change. Tonight, um, the approval is a, the eight point one million dollar borrowing, so that's coming. And then we talked about earlier, the 2023 and 2024 plans are going to change yet, depending on how the borrowings go for the remainder of the building and whatnot. So those are, they're there, but they are subject to change. So here we have our outstanding debt by type. So as of the end of this year, we're going to have 21.3 million outstanding in general obligation debt, and that includes the eight point one million that's going to be, um, up for approval tonight. Then the revenue bonds, we have 22.7 million outstanding. So with our general obligation debt, we are at, as of the end of the year, thirty point two-five percent of our legal debt limit per state. And then going into 2022, with the estimate, with the full borrowing for the building, will be at about thirty-nine point six percent of the debt limit. So here's just a overview of all of the special revenue funds. There's not a lot of changes in the majority of them. Um, the grants fund is the ARPA funds. The Aquatic Center did not have much in changes. We talked at Finance Committee that the Aquatic Center is looking to get rate increases potentially looked at going forward. So that is not in the current budget. But we'll just kind of see how that goes and go with what we have for now. With how we budget, it should end up being okay, with expenditures budgeted a little bit higher and revenues budgeted a little bit lower than where they normally come in. And then if we get that increase, we would have more in revenues.
Yep. Rushin?
Is that rate increase gonna be enough to make up the difference? At the Aquatic Center?
For... Oh, you're saying 'cause of... Um, yeah, Sean said if we were, or do you wanna?
Yeah, so.
Go for it.
We briefly discussed this at Finance. Based on just our daily revenue for entrance into the pool, if we increased the rate by a dollar, so from four dollars to five dollars per person, it would increase our revenue around twenty-three thousand dollars. So it would cover any additional expenses that we would have as far as expenditures, um, by covering, by increasing the revenues, obviously.
Just a dollar.
Yeah, just a dollar.
Just one dollar. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. There any other questions on special revenue, or if anyone else has anything to add? It's kind of a quick, we've kind of looked at all of them. Uh, the refuse recycling rate isn't changing for this year, in case anyone's curious about that. It will be at 167 dollars on the tax bills.
The great funds is the ARPA, so as you can see where we have recorded all the revenues that we received this year, and then potentially we plan to see the other half of our allotted amount next year.
Is it exactly half, or close?
Pretty close.
Is it? Okay. It was a value, and they just divided it, half in twenty-one, half in twenty-two.
Yes.
So then we have our capital projects funds. So we have the TIF one capital projects, with the main projects going on in there in 2022, of the Zinsor Street project, Weston Avenue, the Community Center Drive, and the Stone Ridge project, which ends up being about 1.6 million dollars in projects.
That is all funded by increment, I guess, we didn't point that out before, but the transferring from the spec, there's no borrowed funds. This is, uh, the increment that we collect through the TIF is used to improve, to make these improvements.
Yes. So then we also have the capital improvement funds, forty-one through forty-four, and those are for the facilities, streets, and the equipment. Currently, all that we really have budgeted in there is for the building and Fund Forty-One. And the equipment, I believe, is the known safer and EMPD asks for 2022. We plan to look at the capital improvement plan here soon, and once we look at that, we'll have a better idea of, um, what we need in those funds. But for now, we're just proceeding with the things that we know as pretty certain, and then we'll look at that again later. And then just a quick rundown of the utilities, which are the water, sewer, and stormwater. The rates in all of them are budgeted for the same with no changes. But there is the potential of looking at a simplified rate case here next year. What else? The sewer utility decrease. In... Oh, I looked at that wrong last time. Um...
We're just gonna be looking and monitoring at all utilities and making sure that we can...
Yep. Rushin, other question?
I told, did you budget all those projects sufficient so we don't be, we won't be short?
The capital projects?
Yes.
Yeah, those are separate than the operating fund.
So for all those capital projects, they're, they would not show up on ours, 'cause capital project expenditures aren't an expense in a utility, they're a balance sheet account. So they're not really budgeted for. What we do is prepare a capital improvement plan, and they will be all talked about and budgeted in that plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
Any other questions on the utilities? And the next slide, the way to get started is to quit talking and begin doing. So that is what we are planning to do. We are adopting the 2022 budget, and we will see how next year turns out with what we anticipate.
Yeah.
And summary, the 2022 budget is complete. We already know the challenges that we face for the 2023 budget. The sooner we start and take the time to prioritize, the more confident we'll be that the 2023 budget meets the needs of the communities.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, um, that was the presentation. Moving on to number six, comments. Uh, we'll just go to this first one here, Jim. You wanna make a comment? Is this where you wanna be?
No, I'm, um, fifty.
Oh, yours.
Fifty-nine.
Please, I, for some reason, I heard six or seven. I don't know why I did that. All right, Jim, yeah, I got you then, no problem. Comments? Not all one. Fifty-four, yep. Hearing no comments? No comments on social media? No comments from the, um, the board or the audience here tonight?
No, there's nothing, no.
Nothing? Nobody? All good? Uh, let's see. Opposed, uh, the hearing? Action on the hearing, number eight. Uh, resolution number two zero two one dash zero two nine, a resolution to adopt the operating budget of the Village of Weston for the year 2022. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero two nine.
Second.
Motion by Zhong, second by Zagami. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Uh, resolution number two zero two one dash zero three zero. Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero three zero. Motion by Zhong. Second by Mynell. Just, just, just by the wire, pardon. Uh, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Minutes for the previous meetings. You wanna do all three, nine, ten, eleven?
I'll make a... Go ahead. Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve nine, ten, and eleven.
Motion by Zhong.
Second.
Second by White. Any discussion, no matter? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Number twelve, Building Committee. Uh, nothing. Everest Metro Police Commission, nothing. I'm doing blue. Extra fifteen, sixteen. Finance, no report. Seventeen, Tourism Commission. Anybody have that or wanna comment? Nothing additional. Human Resource Joint Review Board, Park and Rec, Plan Commission. And Public Works, Safer Zoning.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by Zhong to, um, acknowledge, second by White. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Reports from departments. Keith, you're not blue, but not blue.
I'm sorry, I, I guess I have not given a report to the board for a few weeks. So if I may, um, just returning from a week away from the office as well, so appreciate that chance to get away and kind of recharge. I guess first of all, I wanna do, uh, I do wanna thank Jessica and John, and what job they done of budget preparation and all our presentations, and all our department directors for getting things, uh, done timely. I think the process has worked pretty smoothly the last few years. Building is moving along, as we know. Right now, the stationary camera doesn't really show the story very well. I guess a lot of the activity is happening behind in the shop area, and there's more precast panels being set. I guess we'll look into how we can maybe get some information out there on the, at least on, you know, photographic or just kind of film way, if you will, but, but...
I think there is enough light, and then at night you can, uh...
Yeah, I'm very, very happy with the fencing and the lights. Yeah.
Light, I mean, wow.
Yeah, very happy.
Can I ask a question, Mr. President? Uh, I guess the question for Minister Don is, can we foresee this being, are we on schedule? I guess, is there a tentative time where we're expecting this to be completed by? Are we behind schedule? I'm just...
We're on schedule. The projected, um, or the substantial completion date is October of 2022. I couldn't, I can't tell you the, don't recall off the top of my head what the actual day is, but no, the project is on schedule. The, uh, the schedule was to have the precast panels up, so the ropes could be on before the end of the, uh, before the end of calendar year 2021 here. And I think things are on track to do that. The materials are in, and precast panels have been ordered, you know, way ahead of time. They've been being manufactured and stored on site down in Germantown, and they're brought on site, unloaded, and then put up the same day, so they're not being unloaded, left in a pile or stacked, or whatever, handled twice. So I think the site's been laid out pretty efficiently by the contractor. So, I, not, not to, uh, make a, amount out of a maul, I'd question, but yes, they are, they are on schedule.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the things that we're going through right now, uh, we're gonna inventory the furniture inside this building as far as what can be taken over, what should be taken over to the new building. That's something the architect is coming over to do tomorrow. Staff has been kind of tagging things that they think are suitable to take over there, and we'll take a look at that with the architect. I guess one thing we thought was that these tables may be better suited for the training room, and then we look at new furniture for the new boardroom. And one thing we wanted was better chairs, was one of the discussion items I know by the board. So we're working on that with the architect. The intent was really to have a more consistent look of furniture, so there's a little kind of hodgepodge in the areas that are frequented by the public and visible to the public. Uh, one question I have is if there's an interest on the part of the board to have tours of the progress of the construction. We can arrange for that with the contractor and also with staff, if need be so. If there is an interest in that, I guess, uh, let me know. I think contractors flexible in terms of being able to schedule those. Uh, I know the weather's not gonna maybe be that favorable, maybe people wanna wait till the building's enclosed, but, uh, there is a lot happening there, as, as you may be, or, well, maybe aren't able to see from the street. So that'd be one reason maybe to, to take a trip over there. We also need to do a follow-ups, a follow-up at the Public Safety Building. I know there's been limited availability of the, uh, the staff there to, to go over those, uh, potential improvements. So between now and probably the end of this month, I guess we'd like to get that set up. So I, I guess I'll follow up tomorrow with Clay and, um, Josh or Matt, um, what their availability is in the next couple of weeks. I know we have Thanksgiving and during the Thanksgiving season here that are now in, in play. Um, staff has been following the Department of Revenue on the TID two project plan amendment. I'd like to hold an HR meeting, either the last Monday of the month or the first Monday of December, talk about some things that we see on the, uh, uh, kind of impacting our whole HR realm, which I don't think is unique to anybody right now in terms of retail and, um, and, and wages. That's, it seems to be an ongoing or a, a universal issue right now. Like to have a, uh, a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees and the Plan Commission. Talk about, um, some of the things that, um, maybe have come up, you know, among both boards or both bodies. Number one being the TID two project plan amendment. Again, maybe possibly revisiting that. Uh, since we need to make a decision on closing TID two prior to April fifteenth of the coming year, um, and possibly also maybe a meeting about the Weston Avenue corridor before we have the, uh, public information meeting. And then possibly talking, and then also talking about scheduling our schedule, planning, and kind of what do you wanna do with that? Or I'll be working on that, I guess, in terms of a, a work plan for me, as was discussed, uh, in my review, with that along with organizational structure and, uh, some related things. We're also gonna be initiating our employee reviews for the end of the year. I guess miscellaneous item, we do, we did have a Circuit Court declaration of the outlots being, uh, dedicated right away in the Wonderek Springs West Plant, and we're following up with Attorney Edie on the process going forward. Joe Maznuski has, uh, contacted Jennifer in terms of the, uh, possible follow-up on, um, on a possible vacation there. Uh, there is some process, some, a couple of different processes that may come into play. I guess then the last thing is we have a all-staff meeting scheduled for tomorrow at noon. Uh, I know a few of the trustees have expressed their desire to attend. And that's just, I guess, more of an informational item for you, so... Anyway, that's the extent of my report. Do you have any questions?
We do have tomorrow's luncheon agenda in case there's a forum. I, I've got a couple of things, um, the furniture. I, I know I've talked to you about this, this is not gonna be popular, I'm sure, with some of you, but I, I built a few homes in my life. I've never bought brand-new furniture when I built a home. So I, I just caution us, especially getting an architect involved with a look or a theme. I mean, we're, we're probably talking two, three hundred thousand dollars in furniture if we're gonna do that. I think, I think it wouldn't, wouldn't be, the worst thing to do is just to move in and see what fits, see what, what's happening, and then take some months to, to order some furniture. You're gonna have twenty different vendors here just screaming to sell furniture to us, I would think. So I, I just, uh, I've had a few comments from the public that, uh, how often you build a home and then replace all your furniture. I mean, I, I guess I've never heard a ton. So, um, and then the tours? I, um, I think that we should have Myron thinking only on building. I don't wanna get into a situation, I don't, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I don't wanna get in a situation in three or four or five months, and all of a sudden we're behind schedule, and I, I don't care what a tour does, but it's gonna definitely impede what they're doing over there. Uh, and the last one is unlocked. I mean, if you're talking about touring the building, we're locked down now. And, and then about how far the public can get, well, of course, they're gonna get into, into the boardroom. But, um, are we, are we gonna have an open building? 'Cause currently, we're not. Is that building gonna be locked like this building?
It'll be, yeah, there'll be restricted entry behind the reception area, or, which will be behind counter and, and glass.
Okay. I mean, we, we're over a year before we get in there. I think December is the date we were thinking on moving in. I, I just don't know the huge hurry on furniture.
Well, I guess, just if I may reply to that, there is a allowance in the budget. Well, it's very modest, I guess, relative to the whole project.
How much is it?
Six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's not saying we have to use it. I think we are identifying, if I'm not mistaken, going through the offices, that most of the furniture that's in the offices is planned to be put into the offices over there. I do know that, and I know there's been some, I, I think some preferences expressed about how we furnish the boardroom and how we put that together. I know we wanted to have movable furniture and so forth. So I don't think it's departing anyway from that philosophy.
But I think the public areas, I think the boardroom will need attention. Um, I, I would say the shop, you know, a lot of those areas, I, I can't imagine anything being moved over in kind of structures, but it's not that we wouldn't get new, uh, desks or new furniture. I just, I, I wonder if we just should maybe take a pause a little bit and think about that.
So the only, the only thing I would say along those lines, that, well, just, just because of lead times in ordering things right now, whether that's furniture or any, any other materials that are part of the project, anything that we feel is critical needs to get on order, and so it's, has plenty of lead time.
So I, I'm trying to understand, um, I don't think it missed, I don't think President Malone is necessary saying that we're not, we're not gonna purchase new furniture, but looking at alternatives or other options as well to potentially even bring in used furnitures, et cetera. The reason why that also clicks, I believe Church Mutual in Merrill is getting rid of a bunch of the office equipments and furniture as well, too, so we can get in touch with them and see if there's other items or furnitures that potentially would be useful that we can look into. And making... would be useful that we can look into and making use of that as well.
That's a, that's a great point. I mean, Green Heck Fan is going to have people at home indefinitely because they, they never thought they could along with our company and we're not bringing them back to work.
I think we should let them go through the process. Then we talk about, because at this moment, we don't know what he's going to come back, come back to us and what is his, uh, his philosophy at this moment. And I, we hear Mr. Donner, we're going to use this for a training room, but I think we should let him go through the system and then come back to us. We can take a look at it and, and make a better decision. Because right now we can't say yes or no because we don't know what he's talking about.
Just to respond to trustee, um, you know, exactly what you're talking about. Refurbished furniture, repurposed furniture from another, uh, location. Those are things I know that an architect has been able to do with other projects. So, um, and some of the furniture here may, may well end up, maybe the recommendation to be to refurbish it as well. So, um, I, I think the process the architect was going to use was, you know, open it up, kind of have a kind of a, oh, a guideline or a specification put together about what, what may be needed or desired, needed, let me say. And then as, as these arguments send, then from there we can decide what we, how we, how we want to proceed, if at all, that's.
Yep, I did just my one opinion, you know, to, to see this at this kind of a level on this building and then to see the same architect not handle that at the safety building. It's just a little disappointing, you know, that we seem to have missed a tremendous amount of stuff, you know, for ceiling tiles and stuff too. So I'm just making a comment. I don't want to argue, but I'm just making a comment. Anybody have anything else? Move on to clerk. Sarah, anything? No?
Sherry is online too.
Yep, well, I, I see there's no report, but Sherry, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, sorry, I didn't get my report done. But, um, I wanted to add that I'll be working on the, um, April 5th spring election notice. And then the notice will be notifying the public that nomination papers can be circulated beginning December 1st through January 4th for the three open trustee seats. I will, um, send out an email on that. I will post the packet out on our website. So you'll be seeing that information come out. And then also I will have a farmer's market report for the next meeting. That's all I have right now.
Anybody, anything for Sherry? Okay, thank you, Sherry.
Yep.
Uh, finance, it's been your night, but do you have anything else to add or anybody else want questions? No, nothing? Okay. Uh, Fire and EMS, we have somebody new here tonight.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us.
Yep.
Introduce yourself.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is John Lauer, one of the battalion chiefs for Safer. Chief Savage went home sick today and about an hour ago asked me to sit in. So, uh, what he told me was that the report is in the packet. I have not looked at the packet. So, um, I'll field any questions there might be. I know one of the things he was going to talk about is kind of a broad subject. And I guess I can add my, my view of what's going on. First of all, I'd like to say that, um, what I have been told and what I have seen in terms of our budget, sounds like we're, we're pretty, pretty well on track compared to the last couple of years. So I know that that's, um, we're pretty proud of that, I guess. Things have, have kind of turned around for the better. Um, I know that we've, we've looked a couple of years into the, uh, for the next couple of years and that, um, we've kind of gotten back to a state of, of organization, which is good. I'm on a different side of things. Obviously, I'm, I'm part of the command staff. I operate, um, with the crews. And so my point of view is, is going to proudly speak for the rest of the command staff. But, um, again, back to this broad subject that I, I know he was going to, to speak about. And I'm sure most of you in here are aware, uh, it's not just us. It's, it's, it's everywhere across the state and the country. But, um, for some reason, uh, over the last several months and, and actually years, I guess I can say is that not only fire, but E and EMS, but also law enforcement across the country and certainly in our regions are suffering from a shortage of staffing. Which, you know, it's troubling in, in a lot of sense, especially when you, when you are in a position like mine because I see it from the out, from the inside out. We do everything we can to, to, to provide, you know, as, as best a service as we can to our community in August. Recently, uh, Chief Bartek in the city of Wausau reached out to the, to the media and, um, basically as a plea or at least, um, kind of to, to, to make it well-known that they are very, very short-staffed. And with the short staff, as Clay can also attest to, is that with, with increased call volume, we're not seeing an increase in staff. And that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we're not saying, you know, we need more staff. Of course we need more staff. It's just that for some reason, people just don't want to do this job anymore. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into that. Last year didn't help very much. You know, there's, there's a lot of things. Generations have changed. This, this generation, this, this upcoming generation has a different mindset. You know, they're, they're looking into different types of things, uh, for careers and this isn't necessarily one of them. So we're kind of in this situation and it's not just us. Wausau, again, Chief Bartek, you know, stated that last week or a couple of weeks ago, they had a, one day where they had 37 EMS calls. I was on duty that day and we actually, uh, mutualized for them a couple of times during that day. Uh, we've also had in the last, you know, month or two days with 20-plus calls. We're doing that with less than half of the staff that they do. Right now, currently, and, and I apologize, I'm, I'm actually going to have to go as soon as I get done with my comments here because I am on staff, I'm on duty, uh, currently right now. I have one guy at the station. That's it.
Where are you currently at, Western?
In Western.
Okay.
So it's me and another guy right now.
Are you, every other month, you go back and forth?
Yep, so our, so the battalion chief, uh, the, our, the command staff switch stations. Actually, we, it's basically every other month, well, you know, I'll go over to Re Mountain and then, you know, but it's, what we've done is done three different swings. So we, we've completed three swings at each station now and then switched back and forth. So, you know, the call volume here is much different than it is in Re Mountain. Obviously with losing the, the Corona winter contract, you know, we're going to, we're going to, you know, our call volume over there is going to decrease, not, not very much. I mean, it's, I think we, we do roughly about 200, 250 calls, uh, with Corona winter each year. But that doesn't mean, you know, that, that we're going to be any less busy. We have, um, an increase in inter-facility transports that we, we try to cover. In fact, we've got one that's in Milwaukee right now, hence we are, we are down two people. Right now in the, in the Safer district, we have five people. And we, and for the next four hours. So for eight hours, we, we've operated with five people, um, in, in this district. Now, you know, we, we, we get it done and we, we don't, we're not ones to, to sit around and whine, you know, about things. We, we do our job and we do it very proudly. But, you know, it's just, it's just kind of something I wanted to get out there, kind of a point, a different point of view, as, as, as a command staff, as part of the duty crews, that, you know, we, we do our best, but there, there are days where we struggle. And I see it in my staff's, you know, attitudes and we're overworking our people. We have, we have a couple, we have a couple folks that are working. In fact, I have one, one guy that I had to send home. He was, he worked over 107 hours in a row. Didn't go home, didn't go home.
Does he live in Plover?
Yep.
Yep, that's the one.
Yep, Mike Zellner actually is his name and he's very dedicated. But you can see it, these, these, these people are, are very, very passionate about their work. But they're, they're, they're getting to the point where it's, you know, their health is starting to decline. Their, you know, they're just, they're, you know, their demeanor is starting to change. And again, I'm not saying this is just us, you know, I'm, there's other, there's, there's many services. Nacusa ambulance service just, just announced they're closing their doors. Their, their ambulance service is going away and it's being taken over by Wisconsin Rapids. Wisconsin Rapids said they can handle it, but I guarantee you they're going to need more staff and, and hopefully they'll get it. The city of Wausau is asking now for an additional nine members for their, for their fire department. So, um, we're, we're getting it done, but it's, you know, we're, we're at, uh, we're skeletons. We're skeleton crews.
Minimal full-time and a huge heavy presence of part-time. So we're basically a training ground.
We are and we always have been that way. I, my, my original station was Re Mountain and so we kind of followed that same model, you know, and we've always been a stepping stone fire department for, you know, for people to move on to different, uh, career fire departments. And that, we always kind of took pride in that because, you know, we always made, you know, just remember where you came from, kind of.
So I have a couple of questions here. The first question here is, yeah, in regards to, so are we seeing a decrease in interested individuals going to school and graduating to become firefighters, paramedics, et cetera? Or is it because they're not interested in this area here? I'm kind of curious about, about that specifically as well first.
Yeah, we, we, I personally have seen in both, uh, you know, in both aspects. Peo, people just aren't going to school to do this. Um, I don't think that there is a decrease in, in the amount of people that are actually graduating or getting certified. Uh, we, we have a, we have a good program through the tech at NTC. Um, I, I think that program's gotten straightened out pretty well. We just recently, uh, started accepting students, ride-along students again, which is good. And that's, that in large part for a long time was, was one of the reasons why we were able to continue, um, adding staff is because we, uh, we allowed, uh, these ride-along students to come in and, and do their clinical hours, you know, required hours with us. And in a sense, most of those ride-alongs, you know, ends up being an extended interview. And we hired a lot of people then. So we just started doing that again, which is going to help and I, and I'm looking forward to, to, to that. Currently, we have two students. Unfortunately, they already work for us.
So I have two more questions as well to just follow up. So bear with me here. The second question is, um, what marketing efforts or recruitment efforts has Safer done to try and recruit additional?
Well, that's, that's another thing that I, I believe personally that we've, we've needed to do. And that's why, you know, I like having this opportunity to kind of speak out on that because I, it's just that I have a different person, uh, point of view. I, I think that that needs to happen. I, I know there's been some ideas. I, I don't have any.
We don't do much.
We don't, we don't, we absolutely don't. What we have done, I guess, is, is just like I said, is through the tech, you know, and, and giving that opportunity. But, you know, little few, few, there's been little to, to no effort really to, to put anything out. But, you know, the city of Wausau, if you've noticed, I don't know if you've anybody seen their recruitment videos, and they've done an amazing job on those videos. They're, they're very well done, very professionally done. And it's been a couple of months and they've had zero interest. So I don't know what you do. This isn't a, this is a systemic problem. This is not a localized thing. This is, you know, but it's, it's become, it's, I'm sitting in this room in this community where somebody else in somebody else's community is sitting saying the same exact thing. So it's, it's, it's a definitely a systemic part.
One more?
Yes, last question is, um, obviously President Maloney yourself mentioned that, um, Safer is kind of viewed as a training ground here. What can we do though to kind of change that perspective or perception of Safer facility?
A long time ago, I used to say money, you know, pay them more, pay them more. But I'll tell you right now, money doesn't motivate anybody anymore. It really doesn't. I mean, we've tried increasing pay for overnights and, you know, maybe that would increase our interest in overnight shifts and it, it has and it hasn't. So that's a good question. That's a really good question that I don't have an answer to. I don't think anybody else does. We've tried a lot of things, you know, within our re, within our, within our bounds to, to, um, to present, you know, and just within our, within our walls. We've, we've tried to create different, different avenues to, to get people more interested. Our current staff to, to pick up more shifts or to, to become more available for inter-facility transports. And it just, it's, I, I don't know what the answer is. And that's the most frustrating thing is that nobody.
Re Mountain enjoys a nice building, nice facility and we will now too. I mean, our upgrades have helped.
Absolutely, it absolutely has. And, and, and don't get me wrong, our, our, you know, people talk about, you know, wow, morale has been low and this and that. Well, sure it has, you know, last year was, was horrible for everyone, especially in this industry. And again, I know Clay can agree with everything because he sees it with his, with his guys and, and gals as well. You know, but, um, but we've had, we've had a lot of improvements. I mean, our building over here now is, is so much more comfortable and everybody, I, in fact, I think, you know, it was the preference to be in Re Mountain because that was a newer building. And I've heard more times now that it's, that people like to hear better. And it is, it is, we're busier over here, but I think time goes faster. So there has been improvements and there's been things that have, that have increased the interest and the morale for our current staff. We just need to figure out how to get more people in here. And, you know, I think it, I think a lot of people, a lot of times it's, you know, people are quick to say, well, we'll just pay them more or let's, let's hire more people and, and pay them more. But I don't, I don't believe that's the quick answer. I really don't. Because, you know, you do that and you're still going to be in this situation. And now we're, now we're, you know, asking, you know, the budget to, to be altered in ways that, you know, aren't sustainable. But, um, so I, I think that, you know, it's just kind of, you know, this, again, this opportunity to point it out and just kind of, you know, to, to make it aware that from a, from a, you know, a duty perspective, you know, somebody that's out there and I'm on the ambulance, you know, every day, despite the fact I'm command staff, I'm on the ambulance, you know, and that's fine with me. I, I, I enjoy that. But, um, um, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a struggle. It's a struggle every day, but I'm proud to say that, that our people are, do have pride and they do a very good job. So I'm very proud of, of, of who we have and what we have and, and what the board has, has worked with us on. So, um, this isn't a complaint, it's a concern, you know, by all means.
I think you, go ahead.
I don't think you're alone.
No.
Oh, he's not.
It's not just your industry, it's all over the country.
Absolutely.
Everybody's short, is lots of work open for the people to go and do it.
Yep.
It's a higher risk. And so they choose, they have a luxury of choosing different job and different profession. So I don't think you're the only one suffering.
Not at all.
Just the whole country practically. And I think they reported last month, one, that some people resigned from their job and looking for others.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, and that's just it, our people.
Since I've been on the board and Lauren's now on, joins me as on Weston's behalf, um, the, the struggle has always been, uh, it's just not enough full-time positions. And then it's a stepping stone and they're moving on. And, you know, I mean, just like a lot of jobs maybe are here that they move to different departments, you know, sometimes Wausau, sometimes different departments. But, uh, I, I just got to tell you this, John, how you spell your last name?
Lauer, L-A-U-E-R.
So, okay, just the way I wrote it, okay. Far none, I've been on this since, what, 18, 17? Best presentation ever, sitting in that chair, ever.
Thank you.
You've done a marvelous job. You've, you, it's, it's been not the best message, but you, you did it very well.
Thank you.
And, and, uh, I'm, we meet here, uh, the third Monday of every month. And, uh, I'm going to request that you are going to be our, the person sitting in that chair. I'm not kidding. I, I, you've done a super, super job.
Oh, I appreciate it.
I, I probably run into you a few times at the Safer meetings, but phenomenal.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm going to get a name tag made.
Great, I appreciate it. I, I, I like, I do appreciate the opportunity to.
Great job.
Cause I, I'm very passionate about what I do. Um, I've been, I'm proud of this fire department. I was here from day one. Um, and this is exactly what I wanted to do is to build this fire department to something that everybody can be proud of and so.
Where do you live?
In Re Mountain, I'm, I live in Re Mountain.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
Standing, thank you.
And I, if I, I, I do have to get back to.
No, that's fine. Yep, Jessica's got to go too. She's got a event for one of her kids and.
So thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you very much. Yep.
Yep.
Good job.
Thank you.
Sean, Park and Rec, anything more for Sean?
I have a report in the packet. Do you have any questions?
I think good, had a good talk last time too about some, we doing some of the equipment. I think the dollar is a, a very good idea. Thirty, planning and development, Jen?
I don't think I have anything additional. Do you have any questions?
Okay, anybody have any questions? No hands going up? Jessica, you got seven minutes. Um, let's see, 31, please, thank you, Jen, please.
Real quickly, I did provide a report. We had 1,650 calls for service in October. The village had 1,266. Quick staffing update, we have, um, second to the last hire is in a shadow phase, doing well. Our last guy that we hired from Merrill is, um, expedited his field training as we expected since he had eight years or nine years up in Merrill. He's in shadow phase too, he'll be on ground in a couple of weeks. And our last position we got filled, um, his name is Jeff Hancock. He's a 24-year vet from King County, Washington.
Washington State.
Yes.
Yeah, that's outstanding.
Just a great, I mean, you cannot like.
Does he have a couple of kids?
Ten.
Oh, ten, okay. All right, I just wondered, I, I had heard he had over three.
Eight at home and he's older than I am.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I know, God bless him.
Bring him.
I'm really excited for him. I've got one thirteen-year-old than I. Couple of cases to note. Does it? Exciting news. We we were anticipating this news. It took a while. The district attorney finally cleared our three officers that were involved in the April twenty-third shooting in Weston.
How are they doing?
Which we expected. I'm excited. They finally get this chapter closed. We're gonna meet with the D A. We have three very young officers. But we're gonna ask some questions, and we'll do a debrief. We can get on to some awards, which I think are duly needed for their actions that were extremely horrific horrific and heroic. One significant case that came to a close, we had the Sergio Retano case, Retana case, that was from twenty nineteen at Arrow Sports. He got thirty years in prison for first degree attempted homicide and some other charges, so we've been very successful.
Arrow Sports or Kelly Land?
Kelly.
Kelly.
I knew it was gonna do it wrong.
I just, I I just don't remember it. Eric, so.
Kelly.
I was gonna say, when did that?
Yeah, Kelly Kelly was taped off for two days, so I I remember that.
I've done that for years. I don't know why.
No, that's Kelly.
Thank you. So, yeah, we've been really good at getting really great convictions on some of these cases, so very proud of our staff for that. Takes a lot of time. That's really all I I had, so if there's questions for me.
Any questions for Chief? Thanks for all you do. Thank you very much. Let everybody else know that too. I'll try to slow down in the community. Thirty-two, public works. Anything, Michael, you wanna add anything or any questions for Michael?
Yeah, this was the, we had our first, I guess, official snowfall, I guess, this past weekend, so we did get the major thoroughfares plowed Sunday morning. Then kind of left the residential streets to melt, so I think we'll seem to work out time.
I think I think there was a couple passes. I mean, back in our neighborhood, you must have hit the main.
Yeah, so like Sandy Lane, Ross Avenue.
Yep, okay.
Springfield Ave, Weston.
I saw that too. Cool. Anything for Michael? And technology. Nate, do you online?
He is not.
He is not online. God, you think technology would be?
I think he said it's a subscribe thing.
Oh, okay. All the technology. All right, work product transmittals, thirty-four, October building permits.
I move to acknowledge items twenty-seven through thirty-three.
Oh, yes, you correct the bundle.
Second.
Motion by White to acknowledge tw- twenty-seven through thirty-three, second by Ermeling. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you, Lauren. Now move on to work product transmittals, thirty-four, October building permits. What's your pleasure?
I move to acknowledge items thirty-four and thirty-five.
Motion by White, acknowledge, and I think Husheng second that. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Consent agenda. Any, I, anyone wanna pull out or just work right through it?
I will request to pull out thirty-eight so I can abstain.
Okay, so let's move on thirty-seven. Are you motioning thirty-seventh? Okay, move to approve by Ermeling.
I'll second.
Second by Zong. Any more in the discussion and the vouchers? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thirty-eight. What's your pleasure? You'll abstain once we get it up and, okay.
Can I ask what you're?
I'm on the board.
Okay.
Okay.
This is, this is really just the. FYI, that, I mean, they, they sent us this money. We did not request it. So if you read the letter, Jenna actually is the one that received the check from the league, and they had a million dollars that they split amongst departments throughout the state.
We got about thirty-eight hundred.
Yeah, so the money's been deposited, I'm assuming, in the park fund, and it's something that, you know, if we have projects or something we're looking at, we will go through the park director committee and board for requesting to use those funds.
Okay. Motion by White or acknowledge?
Move to acknowledge passing these funds to the park and recreation committee for their input.
Okay.
So that they can, so they can spend it on whatever they feel is necessary.
Motion by White, second by Manel. Any more in the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And abstain by Zong. Okay, sir. All right, thank you all. Forty, ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-one dash zero three-three. An ordinance to approve the rezoning of a parcel of land from B two Highway Business Zoning District to two F, two-family residential zoning district at fifty-two eleven Lee Avenue, Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin. Project number two zero two one zero three six one.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash zero three-three, a resolved request for fifty-two eleven Lee Avenue per planning commission recommendation.
Okay.
Awesome.
Motion by White, second by Manel. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. What, what, what are you here for, Tim?
I'm here with Triggs slash Festival Foods.
Oh, okay.
For liquor licenses.
Oh, okay.
I'm running somebody local here.
Yep, okay, good. So you're with Triggs or Festival?
Well, right now, Triggs. It will be Festival.
Okay.
I'll be with Festival.
All right. What's what's your name?
Brian Edwards. I'm the store director over at.
Oh, I haven't met you yet. I haven't met you yet.
No.
Okay, okay.
Name's awfully familiar.
Yeah, I'm with Russ Davis.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so glad to meet you.
With who?
Informally.
With who?
Yeah, all right. So forty-one, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero two-eight. The resolution to levy for charges assessed by the joint fire department which exceeds the limit. Don't all, don't all talk at once.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero two-eight, authorizing an exception to the levies for charges for safer pursuit to two thousand five Wisconsin Act forty-four, per finance committee recommendation.
Motion by White, second by Ermeling. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-two, resolution number two zero two one dash zero three-two. A resolution to approve issuing G O notes with Intercity State Bank. Motion by Barb, second by Husheng. Any more in the discussion?
And that was for eight million one hundred thousand?
Yes.
That's for construction.
As per finance.
As per finance, correct.
Okay. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number two zero two one dash zero three-one.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks, Jessica. A resolution, a resolution to levy special assessments against property benefited by drive, approach, construction for all properties with furniture on South Timber Street between Ross and Sternberg, Sunset Street north of Sternberg, Arrow Street north of Sternberg, Von Kennel Street between Sternberg and Corzala, and Kennedy Avenue. You just love putting that in here, whoever, Jen, because you do that. I handled it. I read it like five times. All right, so what's your pleasure? Move to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by White. Any more on the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain just because I live up there.
Okay.
Just to be safe.
Okay. Okay. Opposed and abstained, so carried. There we go. Uh, let's see, update on American Rescue Plan. I think we kind of did that term finance, correct? Okay, are we good with that? Okay. Forty-five, water meter pit design contract. Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Zong. Anything on the discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Insurance, everything is good?
Yep, yeah, and if you look at the packet, the contract is redlined per attorney E D, so.
And so the insurance.
Certificate is for the.
We keep bringing it up, but that's just a, that's just a normal thing now, right? I mean, that's just one of the requirements. It's one of the tags. Yep, if I have to bring something in, the Triggs or Festival, I've gotta have insurance on it all the time, so same thing.
Okay, but so attorney E D is working on a standard formal agreement that we will be using.
Okay, so it's good. Uh, no more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Here we go. Forty-six, new business, class A beer and liquor license for express market by Festival Foods, sixty-two oh five Business, fifty-one Weston, Wisconsin. Often confused with Rothschild and Schofield, but very proudly resides in Weston. So I'm glad you could make it. Thank you.
I move to approve the new class A beer and liquor license for express market by Festival Foods at sixty-two oh five Business side fifty-one Weston for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two license term contingent on the current business surrendering back the class A beer and liquor license to the village. Second.
Motion by White, second by Zong. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Sarah, would there be anything else that the village would have with this? Because this takeover is gonna happen right in front of December. What?
So Brian and I have been talking and Festival Foods.
Yep.
Everything is done as far as the paperwork. Brian knows that he's gonna come on the, the sale, bring his old licenses, it will become his new.
So we're, we're clean, and and the rest could be state, it could be lottery, it could be all those other things on the switch over WIC and all that stuff, but but the village is good.
We're good.
Because I I will, I I need to get through this really clean, okay?
Do you need to abstain?
No, I'm not gonna abstain. Absolutely not.
No, you abstain.
That don't matter. I am very, very proud to be part of that board. Yep, you better believe it. Okay? Absolutely, I am. And I I'm not abstaining. Okay. That's all you need. You don't have to stick around if you don't want to. Forty-seven, forty-seven, weights and measures. All right, knock it off here. I'll have fun at my expense. Weights and measures and cigarette license for express market by Festival Foods, sixty-two oh five Business fifty-one Weston.
Motion to approve.
Second by Ermeling, or I mean, a motion, yep, by Ermeling, second by Zong.
Contingent upon surrender by the.
Oh, yes, about the surrendering of the.
The Triggs one, yep. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. There we go. Now we got it. Number forty-eight, Bird Street, Cross Point to Shorey, design changes. That's my favorite here right away at opening. All right, forty-eight, Bird Street, Cross Point to Shorey, design changes. I haven't met him yet. He's been there like a year. And I live here. What the heck? What's wrong with you? All right, sorry about that. Go ahead, Husheng.
I move to approve the design change and also request when they make this design change to put the bicyclists on the road. Instead of having fourteen feet road, the lane, a ten-foot lane and four-foot bicycle lane. You do a two-way. One way, we can put that four feet in there and let the bicycles climb up the hill on that four feet. And then down the hill when he goes, he can be on the road with the rest of the vehicles. And they cannot go on the walking path.
Just a, just a question here. I've just gone through, well, has that recommendation gone through public works at all?
Yes, yes, they discussed same issue there.
Everybody's good with that?
Festy Zagami, we think you, there were a couple of questions that you had in there about changes to the ordinances.
Yeah, so I guess if that's, we we reference a ten-foot path in the ordinance, so I guess one of my suggestions is if we allow the eight-foot path, we would make it contingent on the road having dedicated bike lanes, which is what, you know, Festy Zagami is also indicating here, is that we'd have the dedicated on-pavement bike lanes.
He is my.
So we would bring back those ordinance changes once we, you know, do this.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, thank you. But I'll explain that the reason I'm suggesting this, as it is, is not safe. Because going down, that 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 road is very steep. And you put the bicyclists on that path and the people on it, it's very dangerous and be asking for trouble. Besides, I think by law, the the bicyclist is another motorist, and he shouldn't be on the road. So I think I I recommend that, and I'll thank you for second.
Okay, can you reiterate your motion again, just so I have a better understanding?
Yes, yes. We approve that redesigning the road as they proposed, decrease their walking path to eight feet and the ditch area to nine feet. And then also put four-foot lane on the road for bicyclists. That doesn't decrease their twenty-eight-feet pavement. And I I think that's my motion.
Motion by Zagami, second by Ermeling, or no, Zong. White, correct them. Uh, any more on the discussion? Uh, I have just a point. I was here the night that you had that that neighborhood here.
Yep.
Had the scouts here that night. Will this fly with that group?
Yeah, I mean, this was really the, they're the reason why we are looking at this.
Okay, okay.
Their big concern was the, the amount that the roadway was moving to the west.
Right.
This will shrink it back, so it moves back.
I mean, I thought it was a pretty civil meeting, but I just wondered. Okay, oh, thank you. All right, any more in the discussion? Hearing none. All, all.
Just on Bird Street, from Weston Avenue going north, that's down the slope. I can tell you there's few close time on that, even when you yell at the people biking to your left, bicycles to your left, because they're listening to music, they don't even hear you. Now, what you have to do, you gotta stop, or you gotta go off the path on the green, and that's dangerous.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-nine, Bird Street, Cross Point to Shorey, Storm Pond Additional Design Services Proposal.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Ermeling.
May I just ask a clarification here?
Yep.
So Michael, so my understanding this is that we are, and this would be just awarding additional or awarding this to the contractor that's already been.
Approved, approved.
Do my understand this right?
Correct.
Okay.
So what is exactly, he's, are they looking for just the access points, or are they literally monitoring the the level of water that's leaving these collection ponds?
Yeah, so they have to run the, I guess, the analysis of the pond that's currently located in Windmere Oaks to, A, make sure, I guess, determine its capacity. And then if it meets D N R requirements or not. So the initial scope of the project was assuming that we'd be using ditches the entire way, but I guess it's part of that shrinking the footprint and trying to minimize the runoff onto the properties on the west side, on the north there, where the the land is lower than the road. Utilizing a curb seems to be the the best option, so since we're not using the ditch for stormwater treatment, the pond has to be analyzed to make sure that it is an equivalent measure of what the the ditch section would provide.
There's a lot of water there.
Yeah.
I mean, are you anticipating that you're gonna have to come back and re-excavate that pond, or?
Yeah, so that's, that'll be what they need to do, and if we need to re-excavate that pond, then, you know, it'll be part of the the construction project of the road.
It just, just a comment. Actually, what he's gonna do, if they don't have a sample of the soil on that pond, they're gonna find a sample or do the drilling or do something, or use the sample, analyze it, and see the size is proper or not. If it is not, they're gonna increase the size. If it is, then they're gonna prove, report it to D N R, say, here it is, and that's the size of it, and that's what capacity of the pond is.
I mean, Chris still lives, I think, if I remember, Chris still lives there. I know my father-in-law lives there. I I'm there a couple times a week. Now, a little bit of rain, and that is really wet off of that pond. It, what's that?
A river flow.
I know of it.
Yeah, there's two ponds in series.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just know that it's it's incredibly wet. And I mean, it's wet when there's no rain. You get a little bit of rain, and there's standing water moving through that area between, you know, those two houses, and it's it's a lot. So I'm I'm gonna be surprised if it doesn't take a whole lot to redo those ponds. I'll be, I'll be very surprised, because it, and without affecting the people that are around it, because they're, I mean, their basement's in, as you raise that water level, there's gonna be issues, you know? So we'll see.
Okay, I think we have motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number fifty, Apache Lane, proposed design changes. Move to approve by Zagami.
I'll second it.
Second by Zong.
Question.
Uh, the discussion, go ahead.
Michael, is he gonna put the manhole, one manhole only?
Uh, I think.
One side of the river?
Yeah, so that's number fifty-one. This is fifty.
Oh, okay.
That's a change order for on fifty-one.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep. Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty one, change order number two for the Apache Lane River Crossing Project.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Zagami? Now on the discussion with that manhole cover?
Not question.
Yeah, it's, it's one manhole.
Is it which side of the?
On the north side.
North side.
Okay.
And that one is sufficient to shut the water up and see where is the?
It'll be valve either side, so, um, you can put a meter in there to see which way water's flowing.
Okay.
The meter gonna be there or you're gonna have, is it temporary?
Uh, it'll be a meter we can take in and out.
Or more in discussion? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty two, Trotcher Lane Lift Station Property Easement slash Purchase.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling?
Second.
Second by White. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty three, project number two zero two one, one zero zero four zero, Tommy Dock Site Plan, Site Plan Amendment at eighty six oh eight Progress Way.
I move to approve the site plan amendment for Tommy Dogs at eighty six oh eight Progress Way for Planning Commission Recommendation.
Uh, motion by White?
I'll second.
Second by Manel. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty four, Recommendation from Planning Commission for reimbursement of conditional use permit hearing fees of two hundred and fifty dollars for Patriot Auto.
Move for approval?
Yep, move for approval by Manel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Zong? On the question, I, by what point, at this point right now, in between the vote? Because it's.
It's a discretion, I guess.
It's kind of, uh, null and void if we already voted on it. Jim, do you wanna make a comment? We have a motion and a second on the table and this is discussion. Jim, just state your name and address for the record.
Jim Passell five thousand two Arrow Street. Um, yeah, just, if there were any questions on that, um, I just was at the Planning Commission meeting, um, last week. Same bad time, same bad channel.
Right.
Um, and there, I did not actually even approach the Planning Commission for this. This was something that the Planning Commission unanimously, uh, voted on. And stated that they, they wish to see that two hundred and fifty dollars refunded, um, for the. Amendment to the amendment of the conditional use permit. I understand the breakdown fees that are here, um, but that wasn't what was discussed. It was essentially just a formality that I had to go in front of the Planning Commission because of the way that the, uh. The, the conditional uses set up. That, that it's not, it's not allowed to be approved by staff. It has to go to another public hearing, go to the Planning Commission and come back to the board, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I could.
Yep.
There was some minor changes that needed to be done. I think it was, um. Some trees that had died and then the neighbor had taken down some trees. The idea was that it didn't really materially affect the plan. It did, by, by the rule, we, it needed to come back. And the planning committee thought that it was such a minor change that it, it didn't justify the additional expense staff to do it, so that's why it was refunded.
Okay, okay. Any more discussion, Zong?
Just a clarification here. Have, have we done this in the past? Have we reimbursed or have we encountered any such situation or circumstance that's similar to this in the before? And if we did, what, what, what did, how to react on that in the past?
Well, I don't, I don't know that, but I, I learned something through this whole process that. Once it goes, when it's not a conditional use. Then, because conditional use makes it then go into a whole nother deal. Staff can do all of this, you know, by themselves. But once it goes a conditional use, correct? I, because I just, I actually just learned this like a month or two ago or two meetings ago. I, maybe, you know, everybody else has known it before me. But then at that point, it puts it in this position that it, it's gotta keep kinda dogging.
It has to go through the same hoops, no matter how small the modifications.
Yep, it, it, it limits staff on approvals and, and I don't know if that's by design or if we can change that, because I, I'd like that staff could do it.
I think with conditional use, and I know that was discussed with, um.
Yeah.
Jim early on, that this project involved the conditional use and that there was gonna be, you know, the, the requirements to, to comply with, you know, requirements of code.
But is that, is that, is that our code?
Self-imposed.
Yeah, self-imposed, because once you, once you hurdle over that first conditional use, why then at that point couldn't it then fall back under staff?
See, it always used to come through and it even went to the board. So in the twenty fifteen code change.
Okay.
The board gave more, um, review authority to staff for site plans. Prior to that, site plans went through. Actually, when I first got here in two thousand and three, site plans were approved by the Plan Commission. Theirs was just a recommendation to the board, so they went to the board.
Okay.
Um, over the years, it's kinda scaled back. The board has given more authority to the Plan Commission for that. In the twenty fifteen, um, code change, it went to, as long as, um, the applicant was meeting the ordinance. And this staff could review and approve. It's at the time that they wanna ask for a waiver, or if they have to do a rezone, or if they have to do a conditional use permit. It has to come to either the Plan Commission or the board. So in the case of a conditional use permit, the Plan Commission is the approval authority now and the board is the, basically like the zoning board of appeals.
But my question is, once it gets over that hurdle of a conditional use and it's been approved, then at that point, why couldn't it go back?
We'd have to change.
Yeah.
The ordinance.
We could do that. It's not a state thing or a county thing.
No.
Okay.
The only rules we have to follow for the conditional use permit is the public hearing.
Right, okay. I think we should look at that.
I think we should too. I, I, I'll, I just.
It just makes the whole project in a completely different level.
Well, but it's the timeframe. I, I think that staff's time can be better spent. I mean, I don't, I don't know what it takes to put your packet together and stuff, but. To me, it was a, it's a, um, there's pretty much wheels, it really aren't.
It's a long road.
Yeah, and, and it, and it takes six weeks to do it. It's not, it's not that easy to get it accomplished in the, in the right timeframe. In the meantime, the trees are still gone that died and, you know, the, the landscaping is in. So I'm, I'm just saying that it, they're. I hope that we consider some changes that would allow staff to make.
Well, I, I just wanna add, I wanna add two things. One is, I, I guess the first question I'll ask is produce staff as to why, or the rationale behind the recommendation to deny the request. Is it just based because of the ordinance that's, that's there?
Well, I just think that there's been a lot of time with this particular project, um, and there were fees that were actually, that the village has. Basically absorbed from that, so we pay for the public hearing notice, um, and the applicant did know that. If he changed something, that he needed to get those changes approved before he modified them, so, um, this was probably something that could have been looked at. Back in July when, you know, he was installing that landscaping. Uh, because it was the entire landscape plan. It was something that, you know, we had to bring back to the Plan Commission because it was entirely different.
The, the second point I wanna add is, um, is the fact that, I, I, I'm, if we're gonna re, if we are going to re, um, re reimburse the two hundred and fifty dollars. There needs to be set criterias, in my personal opinion, for, uh, that would kind of, in a sense here, govern or give guidelines as to when it's an appropriate. Uh, appropriate time to reimburse something back to an individual, just simply because of the fact that I'm, I'm worried about setting a precedent in the future here, so that's my thoughts.
And I, and I have just a little discussion too. I think the conditional use needs to be addressed and I, I think another thing we need to look at too, as a village, as a community, is the guidelines on landscaping. I, um, I think it's a lot to ask for, for some smaller businesses and even some bigger businesses to, to do this all upfront, all quickly. And not within a six or a year or whatever. And, and then afterwards, there's really no teeth to hold that landscaping in play. So I, I just think it's just some things that we have to look at in the future.
They do have over a year, they have the next growing season to install, so the building permits are good for two years. Um, in regards to teeth, um, I would guess that if it does become a problem, we, they would fall underneath the, the nuisance ordinance and that kind of. Kind of, um, so there, there's always a way if it does become a problem that the village wants to address, that the board wants to address. Like I explained to the Plan Commission, most likely, um. Anytime the landscaping gets changed is usually when they're doing some type of a project there, so it'd be a building addition or, you know, they, they add a new building to the site. The, the landscaping, um, ordinance has come a long way. It allows it to be spread out. I realize that there's probably more that needs to be done with it and we'll take a look at that. Um, in, in some instances, the act, the, uh, landscapers actually overplant it. We're just looking for it to meet code. We don't look at it to, if they want to exceed, some people, they do exceed. We. Um, you know, we give them what their point values are, um, they have the ability to use trees instead of putting in plants and shrubs, they count for more, so. But yes, we can look at it.
Yep, Barb?
Well, I guess my biggest concern is, this is what our ordinance is at this time. And we spent, the village. Publication fees and everything else because that's what our ordinance requires. And I guess, I, I mean, I, it, two hundred and fifty dollars is not a big deal, except. That's what our ordinance is, so we're going to violate our own ordinance by giving him back his money. If we don't like this, then change it. But at this time, I guess, um, there was a lot of work in, in expense for the village. That's why it's a two hundred and fifty dollar.
There was a lot of, not one time, but a couple times, but I mean, there was a lot of work on both sides.
Well, yeah.
This was an extremely frustrating event. Uh, it's, it's, it's a beautiful building. I've told them so. Beautiful. It's a great addition to our community. It's busier than hell. There's cars there all the time.
That has some.
I, I'm gonna be voting to, to give it back, so. Any more in the discussion? Yep.
I, I don't know if your question was addressed, trustee Young.
Oh, it was not. Uh, I, I.
I guess I would say, in my understanding is that. If the consideration for the exception, as long as he has met the landscaping points. Uh, and I believe that was the case, Jennifer. Is the points. Between the original landscape plan and the revised one in the end.
He received a waiver from the Plan Commission.
So they posted that match?
My first shift in.
They shifted the points because the trees were needed for the parking, the green area, parking.
Okay, so they shifted points, but it was still, but it still meant the point total that normally that might, that would have been required?
Not for that. We got a waiver for one of them. He exceeds in another area.
So I guess I mistaken them in saying that they would be the same. You just.
He received a waiver, so it doesn't meet code. He received a waiver for it.
They shifted the points to the standard trees, correct? But he still had, the overall gross amount was the same, correct?
I believe.
But he did receive a waiver.
They shipped.
He did receive a waiver.
Received a waiver.
That's enough right there. Alright, enough discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm, I'm abstaining. I voted at the Plan Commission already.
Oh, okay. Uh, so carried. Thank you all. Fifty five, interior finishes for the new municipal center.
Um, so maybe this is breaking with what the directive of the board was before, but in terms of color selections and finishes, um. Uh, understanding that staff has is that, you know, those, we worked out with the architect. I guess this was just to show, first of all, the, um, selections that have been made for majority of the building, but asking the board to. And asking for board acknowledgement of that, but also then taking a look at some options for the boardroom itself. Um, so. Michael may be able to speak to the detail on the boardroom options a little better than me put this together in my absence, but, um. The board up to the right hand corner shows the, uh.
Color schemes. Is this our selections or does it architect?
It's a combination of the staff and the architect had a couple different options. Staff looked at those along with trustees Zagami. Um, and this was the, 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 the finishes you see up in the top are what have been, uh, recommended. Um, they have the, the little bullet points there in terms of what, um. What those are. We don't, we don't have the, uh, floor plan that shows the, the different places for these, I guess, at this point, or in this packet. Um.
I, I just think this should have been completely architect. I, I don't think this is in anybody's wheelhouse in this facility, including mine, including anybody else on this board. I, I would say anybody close to it would be Husheng, because he's built buildings. I've built grocery stores. But I, I just don't think, I mean, this is a sixty five to seventy year old building. You know, who's gonna be around? I, I hope they're, they're, um, soft colors. I, I hope there's, you know, that there's a lot of light in here, but that's not who, what I do. And I, if the architect was gonna do this, I, I kinda thought, i- is he gonna, is he or she gonna be able to say, is this John?
He gives two options on each. Lauren?
Lauren?
I just, I think that, uh, we're trying to look for something that's, uh, classic and not garish. And, and functioning, it, to me, it looks like he's laid out, or whoever did this, he's laid out walkways, so you don't have a lot of traffic pattern running through the middle of the room. Which we all know in the wintertime, running, people shoving through here with dirty boots and all that other good stuff. Uh, but, but finishes on the doors, I, I mean, this is just carpeting and, and the finish on the doors, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Nothing else?
Yeah. Nothing else, no. Uh, well, he got the tile and they have to oversee them.
Ho- hopefully low maintenance, low maintenance.
While we discussed that, then I specifically asked him.
Tough as nails.
They wanna spend a lot of time for maintenance or repair and we discussed, uh, he said that's the cheapest one in the market. I said. You're not really interested in cheapest one in the market. Then he cracked himself. He said, is the cheapest one, is that still, is a commercial grade? So.
And, and like the carpets are carpet tiles, so if two or three go bad, you just pull off those tiles and put.
By doorway or something, yeah, that makes sense. That's, that's very typical.
To me, that still looks light though, doesn't it, Husheng?
I'm sorry?
I said, doesn't that look kinda light? I mean, it's, it's.
I think he's deceiving the color in there, but, uh.
I, I just don't see, like, you have all these colors.
Actually, it's most difficult.
I, I honestly don't think I should even be.
No, I, I talk about this.
Uh, I, I wanna add, I, uh, well, number one is, um, I, I, um, although I, I completely, um, respect the, um, modern, um, style. But they're trying to go off of, uh, but to me personally, it doesn't look like a board, like a governmental, um. Board of Trustees, um, style in my personal opinion, but then again, as you mentioned as well, I'm not, this isn't my forte. Uh, I'm gonna defer to the, obviously, the opinion of the, uh, the opinion of the architect or the in the interior design specialist. But that's just my thoughts specifically. I would love it for it to be more, um, you know, semi-wash up, for example, you know, they have a very nice council chamber as well too.
Oh, wait, and I, my two cents was, I thought it should be a flexible room.
And that's what he's depicting here.
But, but I think we, with the thought that maybe we could get rid of the next room, but I think that next room is still there for voting. So this is not a voting room anymore, correct?
Uh, sure.
It, yes, it can. It can be. Okay, okay, then that's good. You know, so if, if we're not gonna be at Dale's and we're gonna be here, you know, and I think, uh, initially, I think we're talking about elevation for the desks. And then I thought that would take away the flexibility.
That's a hazard.
What?
I think that's a hazard.
And then it puts a, an age limit or, you know, an ability level, you know, for me to go up and downstairs. But, uh, I don't, I, I'm fine. I, I just know that if I took colors to any place I've ever worked and said here, it would be absolutely chaotic. No matter, I don't care. I'm just thinking of all the different places I've worked, it'd be absolutely chaotic.
Well, I think that was part of the discussion with the architect. If you had come with the full, the full range of selections.
Yeah.
We'd have been talking about this forever. It was two, two options essentially that were put out there.
I'll move to acknowledge the interior surface finishes as selected by the project team and to approve option A two as the carpet design for the boardroom.
A two where?
Huh? Which one?
A two.
Okay.
Isn't it?
The A one was kinda.
Do you see the difference? I, is it?
One is darker than the other.
Where's, which one's darker?
Down.
Where? Where do you see it darker?
A two, the carpeting, if you take, you actually have to take a look at the color swatches that are in the corner.
So the main difference is.
But the pictures are identical, correct? Cause I can't see no differences in the carpet. Unless, I mean.
First one.
Looking as hard as I can and I don't see nothing.
One on the bottom, it's more brown.
You have to look at the color swatches.
Oh, okay, so three A up there is a carpet square, and then I'm supposed to look at one? Can I see one over there in that corner?
Mine is right here. So three A has a little bit of a red tint to it. Otherwise, it's the same. So it's, do you, do we want to have a red?
I'm out. I'm out.
Flare or not?
Do I have a motion up right now? I'm out. So who who motion?
I did.
And who's second?
There hasn't been a second.
Shane, you got a second?
Second.
You're on the team. All right, any any more discussion?
Just a comment.
Yeah.
That does not include the color of the walls or anything like that.
Yep.
Just the carpet and the seal.
I'm out. Yep, okay.
But there is, this is replaceable tile, like.
I'm fine with all that. Yeah, I'm fine.
No, but I, that's the one thing I had in my head was, because like with this, you get a wear spot, and what do you do with it? Where if you got it.
My my point, my point here, and I'm sorry I'm gonna say this, my point is exactly the room colors of this room. Which I think is an abs, it's a travesty that these room colors are in here. I I have never liked these colors. I, when I, they first went up, I thought you have got to be kidding me.
But you got a green shirt on.
These are the colors. And you know what? This is a nice looking green. Great looking green. But that burgundy and that green and that that whatever seafoam green, I, oh my heavens. I can't even imagine what people think when they walked in here.
You mentioned the orange carpeting we had in the corner before.
I know, but I'm just thinking, man.
That was staffed.
I'm not comfortable looking at this, cause it's.
Nope. You get into a red tint in this.
I just don't like it.
Let me say this.
As long as John can argue with the team, if it's wrong, then I'm fine. But I I think it should, that architect is what, you know, I mean, he or she went to school for that, the whole bit.
They see, he put him in three D. When you put him in the three D in this version, he cannot match these colors.
Okay.
And he said, he said, I just cannot. And I agree with him. He can't do that. It doesn't match. And those say number one, with that number one, as you can see, that's much darker than what he's showing over there.
Well, you can see that one is lighter than three eight.
Those are more real color than what you're saying, seeing over there. These are more, much closer.
I mean, those are all, those are, any combination, I guess.
They're all earth tones.
Yeah, earth tone is exactly what it should be, cause the outside looks, it looks very, like, right. It looks, except the ceilings aren't seven feet tall. Jim?
Not on this, but I just have a question. So you're also voting on the the square exterior and and interior design, right? I only count five or six desks there.
Oh, six. I saw six too. There's no seven. Yeah, I I think.
Right, right, but there's a dozen folks in here right now, and if we're gonna stay six feet apart or however, whatever that looks like going forward.
This isn't the final.
It's only four.
I understand that, but if if you're, if you're dialing into, I want a four-foot perimeter on the outside. Know that you you got married to a four-foot perimeter on the outside and you're only gonna have room for five desks around the outside, if that's how you're gonna do it. Again, I'm not the architect.
It's only picking the colors.
Yeah, okay.
Actual width is probably.
Cause I I've I've never been one for a circle here and then the audience is like, you know, different deal. I I think it should be. Side, side for staff and and department heads and then up here and then they're all part of the deal. When when I first got here three years ago, this was an enclosed circle and the audience, the taxpayers, the donors, the business, what?
One day, we walked into a meeting.
Yeah, well, I know, but if I, I walked into it after getting elected and I wanted immediate change. So I voiced my opinion and and now we're still back to some of these, so. But I, but we're in where we are. I I I've elongated this long enough.
This is, these are the more, much closer to real color.
Yep.
Than what you're seeing.
The outside building going up right now is absolutely gorgeous, just gonna be.
They're emotional, step aside.
Yep, we got it, we got it. It's, I just shut up and we'll get done here in a minute. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to abstain from it. I just don't feel like I have my arms around the actual colors.
Okay, so carried with one abstentation, ab abstaining.
Can I, can I just clarify though? Is that a, you know, I have nothing against you, so like, trust me, I know, clarify. Is that a valid abstention? I'm kind of just curious.
Actually, there is no, you can have, you can abstain for any or.
Any reason at all.
Just wanna, just wanna be clear.
Although it's in your best interest to vote.
Mm-hmm.
You can abstain.
Not against you, trust me, I guess, just wanna clarify.
Well, no, I I just don't.
Nate walks out of dresswood every time and he he now rents across the ways.
Looking, looking at pictures is just, it's it's almost impossible. And I went through when we built People State Bank and Ford Financial and even having enough of a carpet sample. A a square doesn't cut it. Just have, you have to have a lot. It's it's different. I'm just saying that I don't think this is fair being, asking me to take pictures here.
Well, normally it's done live. I mean, I'm sure the staff and and Hushain, I'm sure you saw a live presentation. Cause every time we've done a story, that's, it's always been live. We've seen it, we got to feel it, touch it. And and I'm sure that's perfect. I'm sure it's gonna be, it's gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be absolutely gorgeous. Here we are, here we are complaining, coming from this. Honest to God, can you imagine it? I mean, it it could be in gold and we still ditch, so unreal. And it's me, I'm talking about me, I'm not talking about anybody else. I'm sorry?
Yes, you could have been given the option to not take the action at all.
This is, we gotta take more pleasure in this because it it was a little wild at first. Fifty-six, two zero two-two, perhaps.
Was there a vote on it?
I don't think so.
Yeah, he abstained.
Oh, he abstained.
Yeah, oh, that's right. Sarah's got it. Yep, she gave me a thumbs up. Otherwise, that wouldn't go. Yeah, all right. Uh twenty twenty-two property liability and workers' compensation.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermling?
I'll second that.
Second by Minel. Anything else on the discussion?
You're approving?
Hello? Who is that? State your name, please.
This is Sherry.
I know it's Sherry.
Are you approving? Are you approving option two?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you, did you, did you say that?
Option two?
I didn't say option two, but.
But you are. Okay, option two, option two?
Yeah, that was.
That was kind of right there and I just, you know.
Uh no more in discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Oh, oh, White. I'm on their board. Okay. Just had to ask.
Of course, that's fine.
So we got that? Sarah, good laughing over here.
I got it.
All right, fifty-seven appointments to the human resource committee. We do have one appointment, Robin Hague. Uh will serve again. Talked to her this weekend. I'm very, very excited. We're very, very lucky to have her. Uh she's very involved. She's also back at Green Heck Fan again, which, where she belongs, that's her family. And uh we, I mean, honestly, we're, and we've got another one that we're trying to get a contact with right now. And and she'd be outstanding also, so. But Robin Hague, we can put out, put up tonight for that. And um looking for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Hushain?
I'll second that.
Second by Minel, so discussion, um, yep. Uh so I I I don't know her, so I I don't know her background, but can you give us a little background? She is the HR director for Green Heck Fan.
And she's been on our HR committee in the past.
Yes, she has, and she was outstanding. And uh she asked if, who's the other, uh, we have Mickey, Dirk's Luby now. She's a HR director with Mid State Technical College, I believe, lives in the village. And then the other one is, uh, Kath. Very good too. But Robin asked about her right away. She knows Mickey. And then this other one that we're, we're, we're trying to focus on right now is Elise Crone. And she was with the city of Wausau. And um then also several years with Wausau Homes. And right now, everyone knows of her. We're just, we don't have a contact, so we're trying to figure out where she is. So there's some other people too. Finance, we're still looking for, but I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I did reach out to Carrie Sukka, and she's passing right now, but in a year or two, she'll gladly jump back on.
I was gonna say, although her husband, well, but if they're both.
Right, yeah, John, John won. Yeah. So.
I was gonna say, I know, um, you could probably talk to Brian, not to serve, but he he knows people.
Yeah, oh, that's why I wanted to say it before the last meeting quit, but I'll I'll definitely call him up, talk to him. Yep, great idea. Okay, so right now, we have, the one appointment up is Robin Hague for HR. Motion to approve by Ermling?
Second.
Second by White. Um on the discussion, which you asked for, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, thank you. And on finance, I don't have anybody yet. I believe I'll have somebody in the next couple of days. So that's a mute point.
Can I, can I just uh make a request for future appointments? If you can get their resumes ahead of time, so.
And and I I got the yes this weekend. So I, in fact, we had the agenda made. We couldn't change the agenda. And uh I might have postponed it if it wasn't Robin Hague, so that you could see, you know, but uh. Uh we we want a caliber of of that nature. This is gonna be a really good group.
Sure, it really is.
All right, moving to close session.
Mr. Chairman, can we kick a recess?
Absolutely. We are now in recess.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Glad you're back. Talked to your uncle today. What's that? Talked to your uncle today.
Which one?
Uh, you have one one. I have lots of them. It's the probably twice uncle.
That north, central.
Care, right?
Yeah, he's a care. Randy, he's great.
I'll make the, okay. I'll make the motion to go into closed session for nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific. Specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Property in the Business Park Lot Two, CSM number one eight nine zero seven. Doc, document number one eight three three four three one.
Okay.
We have a motion. Who's the second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Zoa. All those in favor? All right, roll call, roll call. Sherry, go ahead.
Um Maloney?
Aye.
Ermling?
Aye.
Minel?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Zagami?
Hi.
And Nathan Feeny is absent and no vote.
Yes, and no vote. We are now in closed session. Who's doing that? You? Okay, cool. Johnny on the spot. Uh let's see, possible action on closed session items. No action.
No action, just staff.
All right, so attorney referrals? I don't think we have any. Uh remarks from trustees, Lawrence?
I have nothing.
Barbara?
Ee? Um I just wanna inform the board that we had our first uh uh tourism, uh CBB board meeting with Tim White. And it was a very interesting discussion. We had a very good discussion about bringing on new board members as well too. Changing leadership, changing the board as well too. Um so it was a very, very good discussion. In addition to that, I I would request that for future agenda items, we, under department, um, under department, uh, under the department reports. We include a number thirty-four to have the CBB do.
That's a great idea.
As a idea, yeah. Just to get them more involved as well too.
And and you doesn't have to make everyone, but at least a spot where we can talk about it. That's a great idea. You have any else that you you called me on?
No, nothing else.
Yeah, you called me after your last meeting.
Well, they haven't decided yet, so. Oh, 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 yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Um, I almost forgot. Brian Schultz resigned as the board president for the CBB. So just wanna let everybody know that.
I don't care if that's on camera. I'm happy. That's welcome news.
Almost forgot about that. He did make that announcement to the board. Uh so they will be, they're discussing about the new board president.
I, you hung up with me and I I actually stood up at my desk at home and I. So if my windows are open, they heard me. Thank you. That was great news.
That baloney is going.
Awesome, man. First, he's in his pajamas all day and whooping in the afternoon. Hushain?
Get that out of your mind.
Meatloaf? No?
No.
And uh, I don't either. I I gotta say though, that we are very fortunate to have a finance group like that. That's fantastic. We've got some really great people here. And I'm not bringing no food tomorrow, so nobody ask me. So hope you guys have enough. Is there food?
I think there's enough.
My food?
Enough.
Maybe there, okay. I'm bringing a salad.
We don't wanna impose on you.
All right, so.
We don't wanna have any false expectations.
Yeah, well, you know.
I asked.
This for everyone.
Where's the guacamole? All right, so uh.
We're selling your guacamole down in Clear Lake, Iowa, too, by the way.
Yeah, we're down in Iowa, yeah. I got, I gotta go there for four days and a couple weeks. Uh future items, next meeting is December twentieth, uh six P M. And looking for a motion to adjourn, hearing nothing else.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn by Ermling, second, second by White, um, excuse me, by Jean. Uh hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, eight oh four. You know what? Um, there's no, there was no staff on this. There was no staff on yet.
Sherry was on earlier.
No, but I mean, it usually says anything from staff at the end.